Public. Are we broadcasting, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we do have Rogers present.
Okay, so. We are good to go then?
Yes.
So for the. For the members of the public, I'd like to welcome you to the regular council meeting of Midland Council Wednesday, March the third, two thousand and twenty one. This meeting is being held virtually. We've just come out of a closed meeting session where we discussed a number of items. Which for which I will now read into the record, the. Motions arising, but first of all, I'd like to ask. Council if there are any declarations of the community area, sorry, a conflict of interest with respect to the subject matter. Seeing none, then I will move along and I have a motion here by Council Pro second by customer again. The council here and receives as information, the verbal update provided by the chief financial officer. And the town's external legal counsel regarding the status of a development charges appeal. And the council here and endorses the proposed recommendations and direct staff to proceed directly. Also, you've heard the motion comments or questions. Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. That carries unanimously. Next, I have a motion moved by councillor Gordon, seconded by councillor Cunningham. The council receives as information, the verbal report provided by the town solicitor in closed session. Regarding confidential letters addressed to members of council. And the council confirms this direction to staff on how to proceed respecting the matter. Comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. That is unanimous as well. Next, we have a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Ross, seconded by councillor Oshewski. The council receives information, the training. Legal advice provided by the town solicitor in closed session. Comments or questions, counsel? Seeing none, all in favor? And that too carries. Thank you very much. Next, I have a motion by councillor Downer, seconded by councillor Post. That the contents of the regular council with closed session agenda for March the third, two thousand and twenty one be approved as amended. Comments or questions? Read the agenda. Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. That carries. Unanimously. So I next have a motion moved by councilman McGinn, seconded by councillor Maine. That the items and related recommendations contained within the March third, two thousand and twenty one consent agenda. As consent items having been considered by council, be adopted. Do we have any comments or questions around that before I call a question? Councillor Maine?
Yes, thank you. Two, two comments. One, I just wanted to thank the resident again for writing a letter expressing gratitude for the great work by our operations department to. Free do snowing removal on. Trail systems and sidewalks in and around the Aberdeen area. People know as this is the pandemic is everything is outside outdoor recreation is solo recreation is. Really, one of the only things that we have going, and so very appreciative of all the hard work and. Thank you for the community for letting us know. Again, if you have compliments, please send them our way. And if you have criticisms. Certainly send them along as well by email or go online. The E one one system, but we do very much appreciate the feedback and comment from the community. And I'm not sure if it was pulled, if it's on the consent agenda, but I would love. For Mr. Geno to kind of highlight the fantastic customer service report and just highlight. Kind of the next steps of how we can go implementing some of these long overdue customer service improvements for municipal services. Thank you. Pardon me?
I hope you gave him a heads up.
I did certainly.
That's good. Mr. Geno. Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, worship, and through you to councillor Maine and the rest of the councillors who I'm sure are interested in the report as well. Yes, there is a report that we published. It was by. CSPN, who we commissioned to do this study was a grant we received through modernization. To look at how we could improve our customer service. Offerings that we do in the municipality. This was done. Commissioned before I joined the municipality, but I certainly look forward to the results of the study. So we did have a number of meetings with them as they prepared this study. The report came up with, I believe, about twenty five key recommendations. In there, there's five priority ones that I think will be consistent with some of the work that we're looking at in terms of a customer service strategy here. That focus on certainly the vision we have for customer service in the municipality. Training to make sure that people understand how to deal with our customers effectively. And triage, there's always lots of work to do and you want to make sure that you're handling. Handling them appropriately, taking care of those ones that are certainly. Important for safety, but handling those one, all of the the needs of the customers. And of course, using tools that will be much more effective and deliver some efficiencies to the operation. So those five areas were highlighted through the report. As I mentioned in my hundred day report in January. This report joins a previous report that was done, I think, in two thousand and seventeen by another outside firm. We're also receiving another report by Optimus, which was done across North Simcoe, looking at. How we could potentially do things more efficiently and collaborate. And there's even a further study being done at the county level, looking at service delivery reviews across a number of. Of particular things. So lots of analysis that that really needs to come together. And again, in the hundred day, we. We allude to that as a senior leadership team. We want to take this information and make sure that we have a practical. Plan that we can execute as a as a town team to deliver what is really necessary. This year, customer service without question is one of those areas that we want to reinvent a bit. We've got fantastic people who are who are really dedicated to serving this community. We just want to help them. And give them the right tools to certainly do that and make sure we're being effective in delivering that. So certainly, we're hoping first quarter, maybe towards the end of first quarter, we'll come back with. A fulsome report on how we're going to attack customer service, but we're really looking forward to doing that.
Councillor Maine?
I just want to compliment the consultants. It's a very nice looking report. It did struggle a bit with all the acronyms, so maybe some customers feedback on the report. Make it a little bit easier to read, but it was. Very eye opening that they were able to articulate some of the issues that we've been struggling with articulating. And having seen them written down in language, it was saying, oh, finally, somebody took. Pen to paper and wrote out some of these issues that we've been having, and I think all the customer service upgrades are going to be greatly appreciated. So thank you again, and thanks to the consultant for the support.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Gordon?
Thanks. It was a bit of a beast to read, but it is very visually appealing and easy to follow if people are interested. I had a question about the. One of the recommendations to establish a CRM solution or customer relationship manager. Platform. Like perhaps I just naively assumed, but we had something like that right now. And I'm not sure whether they're suggesting an upgrade or something we actually don't have. So that's part one and part two is was, you know, the acquisition or licensing of a CRM. Perhaps within the Microsoft stack, something that was included in the budget that we approved this year? Or is this going to be an ask for next budget in the fall?
Thank you through you, your worship, to councillor Gordon. No, we don't have a CRM solution in the budget ask. We do have a CRM solution. Of. Of some kind that we use today. It in fact is. We actually got an email today with some enhancements that are being added to it. So we're looking at some of those enhancements. So it does. It does provide some some pretty good capability. I think we want to make sure that we test that to see if it. Is it in fact? What we think is what we need. So we'll take a look at what we have today. If we think we need to enhance that, we'd obviously include that any budget asked that. That come out of it, but I think in terms of the strategy that you'll see this year, we're going to use some of the tools that we have today. There is a commitment to update some of our. Our telephone technology, which I think will be a really, a really important enhancement to our customer service. So that tool on its own will enhance it. And we've also got some commitment to work on. On our data strategy. So having effective tools that allow you to get to processes and procedures and storing information. Leads to a much more effective organization and frees up people. So I think those tools alone are pieces that we're going to concentrate on now. Our existing CRM solution will will focus on today.
Thank you, Mr. Denno. Any other comments on this matter? Seeing none, then I'll ask the question, all in favor of the motion for the agenda, consent agenda? Thank you. That carries unanimously as well. And then with that. I have a motion by councillor Oshewski, seconded by councillor Gordon. The council resolve into the committee of the whole. All in favor? Thank you. That carries and over to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, worship. Welcome, everybody. This evening, we're now in the committee of the whole. Tonight, we have no presentations. We have no deputations, no public hearing. But the next item would be. The COVID update from our CEO, Mr. CEO.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and happy to provide you with a COVID update on what's happening with the town and the town services that we're providing. So in Midland today. As of today, one hundred and twenty eight cases in Midland. The last case was recorded February seventeenth, so. That's good news. You know, we haven't seen a case in some time. In Pennington Machine, one hundred and twenty five cases, and you've heard of some of the outbreaks that Pennington Machine has been dealing with. So their numbers have. Have gone up as ours did when we saw a tremendous jump in December. Tiny's got fifty two cases, Tay seventy five cases, and some of theirs are more recent as well. So. The virus continues to be, you know, circulating in the community and as we've seen, if it takes a hold. It can be quite treacherous. Just to remind everyone. But the type of virus that is dominant now in Simcoe and Dr. Gardner has alluded to this is the UK. Virus which spreads quite rapidly and is quite devastating. This was the one that that was. Rapid and Roberta places, we know where seventy one people died and over two hundred people were infected. This is really the the reason why you saw Dr. Gardner. Suggest to the provincial government that we should go into lockdown again. This is why you're seeing. Toronto and Peel most recently. I think today their chief medical officers are recommending. That the government that they go into lockdown again. And indeed, what you saw the government do was put Simcoe into that gray lockdown. So that is the situation and some of the reasons behind that. Certainly, as as a town, we continue to look at, we continue to do. To support our residents, our town hall services, we're continuing to do restricted walk in service. For our for our customers and we talked at great length with our wonderful customer service reps. So I'd like to thank. Marley and Melanie for tremendous work they're doing. They certainly feel safe and in fact, they advocated to. Continue to serve our customers in that manner. They felt that was the safest way. For them and the customers to get the service. The one thing they did say is if you're going to pay with cash. Please don't lick the bills. You know, they'd ask you not to do that. That's not a comfortable exchange that they want to have. So they asked me to. Make sure that was called out. But again, we were we're taking a good number of services in person, but we're really trying to plan. When we service our customers. So we've got, if you go to our website, you'll see which ones we're asking to do by appointment. And again, that's to make sure we can space people when they come into the facility and make sure that we've got the right staff available. If we can, we'll handle it virtually and do it with a phone call or a virtual meeting. So. Everything seems to be working well. We have got lots of positive feedback from the public on that, and so we'll continue to do that. The other piece of news, obviously, is yesterday at our rec center, we we opened the vaccination. Clinic along with the the health unit. So the health unit is running that vaccination clinic. We're providing the facility. You'll be there for some time as the vaccination, as the vaccine continues to come in. So certainly into the fall, we expect that to be to be happening. But a tremendous amount of work by, and this happened while we were in budget deliberations last week, tremendous amount of people came together quite quickly to get this to happen. And if you know anything about having people operating your facility, you have to go through insurance, legal, you've got to certainly deal with our unions as as is required. And also our partnering municipalities. All of that came together really quickly. I really want to give a shout out to Sean Burrow. And to Gord Roche, our deputy fire chief, who were the two lead person, people on this, who made this come together. By all reports, the first day yesterday went really well. Two hundred and twenty eight people were vaccinated at that facility. So that's great news and hopefully as more vaccine comes in. That will continue to happen. The public response at the facility again was very positive. So it sounds like. Things are working well and obviously we'll continue to make sure that it. That it is effective. All of this is being done by by the Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit. So. You don't call the rec center to get your appointment, go online and there's a number online. That's available as well. We'll make sure it's up on our website. You can contact them. I think they're sold. Sold out right now in terms of booking vaccine appointments. But continue to go there and when vaccine becomes available, if you're eligible. You can book your appointment through them. So with that, I just wanted to again, thank all of the staff for what they're doing to continue to offer the services that they're doing. They're. Continually stepping up to the plate, making those adjustments that you need to do when. When the provincial guidelines change somewhat, but we're really working hard to make sure that we're keeping everyone safe, including our employees and the public. So welcome to questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. CEO, and great to hear that we're having this vaccination center at our rec center. What a perfect. Place for it, and hopefully we can get everyone in there as fast as possible. Your worship, I saw your card. Anyone else?
Deputy Mayor, I just. Had a person phone me yesterday, very frustrated that their ninety year four year old father was going to have to wait until July the twenty fourth. To be vaccinated. And couldn't understand why that was. So I tried to explain to her that the. Right now, they're they're ramping up a number of facilities. I think the number will eventually be sixteen, and they're also ramping up the number of vaccination stations per facility. So the vaccine permitting and the scaling up or the increasing the diameter of the pipe, so to speak. That date will come closer and closer to the present day. Was I correct in telling that individual that and perhaps just for the general public to let them know that that's the case? Could you confirm that?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I'm not sure the circumstance of why they're waiting till July. You know, you can. If you can get an appointment, obviously, there might be some physical restrictions on how far they can go to get an appointment. Much like the flu shot, if you were able to get one at wherever it was available, you know, you could you could. Expedia, you know, the the process. I think, quite frankly, we're somewhat limited. And when I say we're, the province is somewhat limited in the amount of vaccine that's available. As more vaccine becomes available, I think they're going to obviously open up more spots for those people to get. The vaccinations done, so. Hopefully, before that July date, as long as people continue to check. I think they'll ramp up just as quickly. That's one of the reasons why they're in facilities like ours, to allow them to have some. Capacity to expand. I know there's lots of people who are. Who have healthcare backgrounds who are volunteering to try and assist. So I don't think that's an issue. I think it's a bit of a throttle on on the actual vaccine itself.
Follow up, your worship?
Thank you. I just think it's important for people to understand that there are two factors at work here. One is the capacity of the facilities that ramps up. And as you point out, it's also the availability of vaccines, both of which are projected to scale up fairly quickly. And hopefully in unison and that. Really. To my mind, this July twenty third date for a ninety year old. I mean, that suggests nobody, we won't be finished until two thousand and twenty three, two thousand and twenty four, which I don't think anybody believes is the case. So just for the public to understand that when they. Get that sort of a date, make sure you do register because now you're in the queue. And as that capacity increases, you will move closer and closer to today's date to be vaccinated. So. Please do register. Don't just hang up in frustration or whatever, because. Think it's a function of how the how the system is actually looking at the capacity, doing a calculation and saying, I can only do so many. That means you're out in July. And in reality, as they increase the capacity or increase it. And the date closes up. I think it's important people know that. So please don't give up. Register your name and you will get a call.
Mr. Duro?
Thank you. If I if I could add on to the point that the mayor said, people need to understand that this is this is literally day one. That this vaccination center has been operating and the health unit, the health desk that is supporting taking the calls. The online service that is supporting taking the online registrations. I mean, they're all working, but the capacity of them are, you know, needs to ramp up as does the vaccine. So I know we did get confirmation from the health unit. They're adding more. More lines for the telephone because they're getting a lot of telephone inquiries. So if you were. If you were on hold or getting busy, you know, hopefully that will be taken care of as they add more capacity for that. Perspective and as the vaccine becomes available, of course, you know, they will open up more slots for people to book. Getting their vaccine. But as you said, Mr. Mayor, I encourage you to check back regularly. Regularly with the health unit website, you'll have the most updated information on what's available and. These people from from certainly my experience, I've turned up lots of services like this quickly. This is a phenomenal job. You know, that was done to get this done in extremely short timeframe. So, you know, there's a lot of great work being done by a lot of great people.
Thank you. Councillor McGinn?
So in many ways, I want to echo what's already been said and then add another point. So if you're the sort of person that is that is pro vaccination and wants to have the vaccine, do continue calling in. It yes, it is new and I will say that the, you know, that getting it up and running is absolutely tremendous. It's a phenomenal job, you know, in the history, there's been blood donor clinics. And there was a couple of times where they said, no. And that was at the beginning of COVID. So, you know, the things that have been put in place. Our rec center is a safe place. So if you're choosing to go, it's the availability of the vaccine, for one, the quantity. It's shipment where it is. So we're talking about capacity. I just wanted to be clear. Capacity is not only about the capacity for the system to take your call. But it is also the availability and the distribution of a vaccine. There's also, there's also. There's also. Choices that are being made about whom it is that is that are. That have the option of being accepted for the vaccine. So please, you know. Understand, if you want it, keep calling. Yes, get your name in there because if you want it. There may be a larger amount of the actual vaccine available. Thank you to everybody who is being patient through this. And I wish everybody well.
Thank you very much, councillor McGinn. Any other councillor Maine?
I just want to piggyback again. Thank you so much. I mean, this is almost a year ago since we were talking about trying to offer up anything that we can do. So having municipal. Facilities as a vaccination clinic, again, to Mr. Berrio and Mr. Roche. Kudos again, such a hard such hard work. I just want to say what a powerful image that was seeing the helicopter land on Bozley First Nation on Friday, delivering the vaccines. It was just incredible. And so our hearts go out to St. Teresa's with the outbreak there. I'm, as a graduate from St. Teresa's, all the staff and students affected. We wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Maine. Any other questions? Comments to the CEO? Thank you very much, Mr. General. Well, I apologize. I, we have one more for you. Don't go. Councillor Gordon?
Thanks. I'm just. Something that came across my feed. I just thought it'd be interesting to know, and we could save it for the announcements sections, but it's COVID. And it's from our MPP Jill Dunlop. And it's a service where you can actually get a text message alerting you that you're eligible to receive the vaccine. So just to kind of piggyback on what the mayor and everyone else is saying here. Let's quickly read this. It says responding to the increasing number of calls and emails. I or she's been receiving about vaccine availability and difficulties accessing information from the public health unit. She's launched a COVID nineteen vaccination notification service today. There's a link on her website. To where to sign up for this service. And it says the online vaccine notification service offered through my office for residents of Simcoe North. Will provide you with a message via email and or text when you're eligible to receive the COVID nineteen vaccine. When the time comes, we'll send you an email and text link so you can book your COVID nineteen immunization appointment. It's that simple. To sign up for the alert for your ability to build. The sign up is an alert of your ability to book an appointment only. You must book your own appointment. So they can't book on your behalf. So that's a service for people who maybe are challenged with logging on constantly and trying and finding when they're eligible. That's being graciously offered by Jill Dunlop's. I guess her constituents' office through her website. So that may be something we want to share on the town. I'll share on my social media, but the town may want to. I think it's a great idea. I know I tried unsuccessfully to book for my mother.
Great, great point, councillor.
So anyway, for what it's worth, thank you for ongoing efforts. And I too, I'm very happy to see the sports and rec center being used like this.
Thank you very much, councillor Gordon. That's a great point, and hopefully we can get that up on our website. And share. I see a nod from Mr. Denno. That'd be great. Yes. Awesome. Thank you so much. That's fantastic. And I'm glad we got to you. I would hate to miss that information. Thank you. So next up, we have notice of motion, and I know the your worship, you have a notice of motion, so I will turn it over to you. I want to remind council. Very rarely do we bring a notice of motion forward and we vote on it on the same day, but. I think this one is one that I think you'd all agree, we will need a two thirds vote in order for it passed though. And so that would be six out of nine. And but as I said, I don't think it'd be a problem. Your worship, it's all yours. Please. Bring to your table, to the table and notice a motion.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think actually we need a two thirds vote to consider it. Actual, so.
I apologize. That's what I was referring to.
Can I ask a show of cards from council if they are willing to entertain the? Notice of motion and debate it this evening?
I see that's unanimous.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So what I have here is actually something that's grown out of. A lot of council commentary in terms of the feedback they're getting from the community. With respect to. Some small businesses not being able to open under the lockdown. And there was an email by the city of Berry's mayor. To the premier, to the attorney general, to. A number of MPPs. At Dr. Gardner, which basically acknowledges the need to contain the virus. But in in the context of the lockdown is asking the province to. To reconsider the conditions under which people are able to operate. And so what is. What do you put on the table now? Is a hopefully a distillation of everybody's thoughts around. The need to to control the virus. Not as something that's second guessing the premier, nor is the second guessing Dr. Gardner, but rather it's asking them to. Take another look at how they might allow individuals. In a broader context and small business to open as long as they can demonstrate the framework. So. We are permission, Deputy Mayor. I'll read the the motion. So it's moved by myself and seconded by councillor Oshewski. It reads. Whereas the Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit has the largest number of UK variant cases in the province with one hundred and ninety local cases tested positive. With the COVID nineteen variant of the of concern, UK B one one seven, and another three hundred and nine cases screened positive. And are waiting confirmatory testing. And whereas our region has been moved into gray lockdown level, the provincial response framework, the research in the cases of being one one seven, UK variant. COVID nineteen in Barry throughout Simcoe County and the District of Skoka. And whereas the emergency break is a short term measure meant to help to stop the spread of COVID nineteen. And to protect public health and health system capacity in our region. And whereas under the emergency break, all retail environments are able to remain open with reduced capacity. While other small businesses cannot remain open with the same protective measures in place. Now therefore, be it resolved that council, the town of Midland supports the request of Mayor Japhline, city of Barry, in his recent letter to Ontario Premier Doug Ford. Dr. Charles Gardner, Medical Officer of Health, but Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit. And MPPs Doug Downey and Andrea Conchin. And further, that the council, the corporation, the town of Midland. Requests the province immediately reconsider the business restrictions within the gray lockdown category of the framework. To permit equity for all small businesses to remain open that demonstrate that they can operate within the protocols dictated by the framework. So that's the motion I would like to put before council. It's basically very expressly asking that province broaden. The number of businesses that are permitted to operate as long as they can demonstrate that they can operate within the the framework. That's in force at the time. So that's the motion, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, your worship, and I'll go on to, uh, question the comments. I see Counselor Ochowski and then Counselor Downer. Counselor Ochowski, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, your worship, for bringing this forward, uh, and thank you for leading us on this charge. I think it's very important that, uh, you are the leader in this message and, um, I think it's very important that we all stand together for our, uh, small business. Um, rather than, you know, state all my opinions and tell you how, uh, I, I feel about this. I, I'd rather read the BIA, uh, letter to council today with permission. And, uh, probably take about a minute of time, but, uh, I think the message comes from people who are, uh, emotionally vested and, uh, financially, uh, vested and struggling here. So if I could just have a minute of your time.
Please share. Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Changing tabs during a Zoom meeting. This is high tech stuff. Okay, here I am. So this is, uh, from the BIA, um, addressed to Premier Ford, MPP Jill Dunlop and Dr. Gardner. The Downtown Midland Business Association represents over 130 mostly small, independent and hardworking businesses. The recent announcement of Simcoe Muskoka moving into a third lockdown is devastating for many within our membership as well as outside our geographic boundaries. We are requesting that the restrictions within the gray lockdown zone be immediately revised to allow small business, especially those in the personal service industry who are already following restriction and health guidelines and who pose little to no public health risk to remain open. If all retail environments are able to remain open with reduced capacity, there seems little reason why other small businesses, particularly in the personal service industry, cannot remain open with the same protective measures in place. Your swift action can help save a number of small businesses in Midland and the rest of the Simcoe Muskoka region. With the decision to move our, uh, region into another lockdown a mere two weeks after allowing businesses to reopen, many, many of these businesses now face cash flow deficits and financial losses after restocking their inventories, onboarding staff and investing massive amounts of money into over compliance of health and safety regulations. The Downtown Midland BIA and its membership understand the delicate balance between ensuring the protection of public health and economic health. A clear imbalance is evident with large chain retail, large chain retailers being allowed to stay open while they consistently report cases and have a corporate framework to support them while small businesses whose owners best their own dollars for over compliance and rarely report any cases are faced with these restrictions again. With urgency, we are requesting that you immediately revise the restrictions within the gray lockdown zone to allow small businesses that have been operating under strict health and safety requirements, lower occupant capacities based, based on regulation and their own comfort for service that they provide who pose little to no public health risk to remain open. Thank you for your time, Scott Campbell, Chair of BIA. So I just wanted to, uh, read that for the public. I know it's in our council information package and, uh, um, I just thought it was a great letter. I, I certainly align with it and, um, instead of me pouring out my thoughts, I thought it was much more important, uh, to come from the people that it truly impacts. So I, I support them. I support peaceful protest. Uh, it was interesting to see my best friend, uh, in pictures marching around with a sign. So this sits very close to home. We're a small town. We're a very tight-knit community and, uh, my heart's with everybody and, um, be kind to each other.
Thank you very much and well said, Counselor Ochowski, uh, very, uh, and thank you to the BIA for that letter. Counselor Downer?
Thank you. Uh, can you hear me okay? Okay. Uh, I support, uh, I support a letter to the premier and to the MPP. I know what these people are going through. I, I was a small business owner on the main street. As a matter of fact, I sat there this afternoon on the main street in my, in my vehicle, watching things and it's, it's pretty dire. And I can appreciate where they're coming from, but we must respect the rule of law. And, uh, in sending the information to the premier and the MPP, if, if we can change their minds, I'm all for it. Otherwise I think we have to, we have to, uh, respect what, uh, Dr. Gardner has, uh, on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Downer. Counselor McGinn.
I support the letter. Um, uh, honestly, I'm a little upset at the beginning part. Um, now they can look up the stats themselves. So it's a little, it's the truth, uh, but they can look up stats themselves. Um, there's a, so I, I support that. I support the peaceful protests. I support, I support people who are, who are afraid and I want to uplift them and I want to help them. Um, there's, uh, you know, there, there's challenges that are out there about how you're going to support your local. I support that. Um, and I, I feel, I feel you. I hear you. You're all, you're afraid. And we're here and we are, this is the layer of government where we are to advocate for you. We are to be your voices. So I'm here saying, I support you. Um, it's, it's a little bit, it's a little bit sad that there's a, there's a deputation that was put in, but it didn't get in in time. So it's going to come in two weeks' time, uh, Graham Wickstead, and it came out of a petition, uh, from the community and we all see it. It's that, the gray hand. Uh, so there's a lot of people that, there's a lot of people, there's a lot of community members out there that are getting together and they're petitioning saying, come on, we need you to be our voices. We need you to speak up for us. We need you to believe us and invest in us. Uh, and so, you know, just to help us to, to thrive. Well, you know, maybe it's not even thrive, just survive. So I support this letter. Um, we'll see whether, you know, the deputation, there's going to be people who will speak and I'm looking forward to it. I wish it was today. That's the process. Um, Counselor Ochowski, thank you for reading that letter aloud for the public. I, I appreciate that. Um, Counselor Downer, yes, I remember your tea shop. Thank you very much for personalizing. I appreciate that. And to the people who are out there, yes, as Counselor Ochowski said, let's be kind to each other. Let's try to support each other. Let's try to keep each other safe. Let's do, let's do what we can. And right now, today, my fellow council members, my brothers, my sisters, we have an opportunity to speak up for the residents. And thank you to those of you who already have, who look forward to hearing from everybody else and seeing where this goes.
Thank you, Ca- Counselor McGinn, Counselor Maine, then I'll have Counselor Gordon.
Thank you. I'll, I'll be brief. Um, we had a very, um, productive discussion last night at the BI board meeting. Thank you again to Scott Campbell for, uh, putting some of those thoughts into words and, uh, getting the letter to us. Uh, thank you again for, uh, to Mayor Strathern for, uh, putting this motion on the floor. Um, yes, it's a very difficult time. I know some people are, uh, affected disproportionately to this. Some businesses are be able to continue on without restriction. Others are being impacted. Um, and I just wanted to give some additional context. Um, if we are going to continue, uh, lockdown, um, and having the trade-off of livelihoods versus lives, um, we have to continue to have compensation. Um, and so, uh, thank you to the province, Ontario, for on the Ontario Small Business Support Grant and the Main Street Relief Fund. Um, but I guess the, uh, request would be, uh, to expedite, uh, that. Apparently it still takes a couple of weeks to process those payments. Um, and so if there were still going to be lockdown and people are going to be impacted, um, to, to enhance funding for those, uh, affected businesses using those provincial tools. At minute, at the municipal level, we do not have the financial tools to be able to, to offer that level of support. So again, returning to the province and, uh, pleading for assistance, um, for impacted businesses. Uh, and so, um, also again, there was comment about, uh, additional funding for digital Main Street. Um, and many of our businesses downtown, uh, downtown have taken advantage of that not once but twice uh, over the last year, uh, last few years. And, uh, and many have thought that, uh, has found that that's very helpful to adapt, rapidly adapt their businesses to be able to offer online delivery or curbside businesses. Uh, and also just to enhance the physical presence. So, um, this is a very, um, important discussion that we're having. I thank you again for everyone's input on this. Um, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Maine. Counselor Gordon?
Thank you very much. So I've been approached by many of these businesses, as I'm sure you all have, um, sharing their stories of pain and desperation. And, uh, the one thing that, you know, that resonates the most with me is that I, I get it. I was a small business owner for many years. My wife still operates a small business. And this is, uh, unprecedented. And, and it pains me to have to tell people that, you know, the, the rules and the laws are what they are, and we do not, as a municipality, have any direct input into the health unit declarations or what the province decides to do. And I support this, uh, act of solidarity. Um, that's, you know, really it's a token gesture, but I know it means an awful lot to our community to see us take the stand together. Um, I do a hundred percent support it, but I also want to temper that with the reality that we can't call off the hounds. We can't, um, direct our OPP partners to look the other way. We can't ask our bile officers to, um, you know, not do their duty and enforce laws and rules that are in place. Some of them may have their own personal feelings and they hate their job and they hate going there and doing this stuff, but they have to because that's their duty. So while I wholeheartedly support people's right to protest and, uh, you know, do so peacefully, I, I think the petitions going around are wonderful. I think adding our voice to the chorus uh, from municipal, federal politicians and our other councils in, in Simcoe County. I think it's the right thing to do and that's, that is what we can do collectively as a council, but that's about the limit of our, of our ability. So I do support people. I, if you, if you choose to open and roll the dice, and that's the way I've characterized it in my communications with people. You know, you do so at your own risk, whether or not it's actually going to end up in a, it actually will get to court or whether it'll get dropped by other, these are all gambles that I don't know if you're really prepared to take. So from a municipal standpoint, we get it. We hear you. I think what you're seeing tonight and hearing tonight is that we support you. And we'll do everything within our power, which is very limited, um, to do what we can. And we're collectively going to hope and pray that you're going to make it through this and that perhaps the government will see the light and change their position on it. But the one thing I wanted to be super clear about tonight above supporting the, the rule of law, sounds not a position I can change, you know, after my entire adult life working in it, is that I don't want this letter to be seen tonight by Dr. Gardner and his staff and the people working as some type of vote of non-confidence because it is not, and this is not an attack against, um, science or, or the reality of this pandemic. And this, what we're asking for is just, you know, a, a different approach to this lockdown that, uh, is measured and makes sense to the people that, that have to voluntarily comply. Cause in a day, this is all voluntary complaints and we've largely lost our, the will by most of our, our society to comply now. I mean, there's, people are just so tired of it. Their patience of wearing thin normally sane rational law by any people are making really different decisions and having different conversations. So I, that was my key takeaway is that by supporting this tonight, which I will wholeheartedly, um, that this is not a condemnation against the health unit, Dr. Gardner, his team or the medical professionals that continue to guide the, the government. This is a political thing and ultimately the decision, um, to change the parameters that they choose to will be political. And that's my, my only message to the community. So I stand in solidarity with you and we'll happily vote yes to this tonight.
Thank you very much, Counselor Gordon. Counselor Prost, then I have Counselor Cunningham.
I, um, I want to echo everything that was said tonight. I agree with all of it. Um, and I appreciate the peaceful protesters. I went down to see them today. And it was, it was very nice to see and they're really just looking for, um, the change in what our lockdown means and, and how we make it work and they can still open. Um, the letter from the BIA and the motion tonight, I completely support. My hand will be up. And I really hope we get the change that we're looking for and be able to do it properly and keep everybody safe and keep people working. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Prost. Counselor Cunningham.
Thank you. And of course I will speak in favor of this as well. And I thank you, your worship and Counselor Ochowski for bringing this forward and all council for supporting this. I just want to also point out that our businesses have taken advantage of the knowledge, the wisdom and the support of our health unit who has worked so diligently to train all of our small businesses on their capacity, on their PPE, on their requirements. This is a very rational, reasonable, uh, request that businesses be respected to be acknowledged that they have these resources and the ability to take care of themselves, their staff and their customers. And we've seen so much evidence of the respect that they are giving to the restrictions. This is high time, um, that this be really reviewed from that standpoint of now that we've had all this time to do this training, let's let those businesses that are doing their part open back up and follow these rules. Uh, we know that we can take action that results in containment within, within reason, right? And it, it is that within reason. I know many of you may be celebrating with me today that the waypoint, um, outbreak is over. I get to see my husband's face after six weeks and without a mask. So I'm very excited about that. And they did an incredible job of keeping that contained. You would barely know what was, um, in the community because we are able to take those respectful actions. And I think it is disrespectful that that is not at this point, so many months into this pandemic being considered. So I have high hopes that this will be considered and reviewed by our provincial government and change will ensue. And if you have not taken advantage of that wealth of resources from the health unit for your business, do it now with your fingers crossed that we'll have some results soon.
Thank you very much, Counselor Cunningham. Um, your worship, if I could, I'd like to say a couple of words and, uh, then I'll turn it back to you. I just wanted to echo everybody's, uh, statement. I want to, uh, thank you and especially Counselor Gordon. Of course, this is not anything to do, any fault or any harm or any misjudgment on, uh, Mr. Guard, sorry, Dr. Gardner. We, I, I think we all respect and appreciate the tough job this gentleman's ha- has to do. Who would have thought a year later, we would still be talking about this pandemic? And you know what? It really breaks my heart that law buying citizens are really, are considering that they are going to do something to break the law. I please ask you, we are here to help. We are going to do everything we can for the premier and Dr. Gardner to try to listen to and help you out, but you're not helping anyone by breaking the law and you're not, definitely not helping yourself. And, you know, I just, Midland in my eyes is a great town with great people. And we can get through this together. I never thought in a, ever that we'd still be here a year later, let alone, I don't even know when it, you know, if a few, when, when it's going to end. It, it could be much longer than even another year. I don't know. We, none of us know. This is unknown, uncharted territory. And, but I just encourage, please, Midland, we're such a strong, great town with the greatest people I've ever met and I know we can do it. Let's just keep, and if somebody's out there, they need help, reach out. Start a little GoFundMe page. Midland's got some great people. If you find yourself, you can't make that rent, we're here to, people will help. I promise you, this is one great town. So please, I'm, I'm begging, let's just try to join hands and try to get through this. I, I hear your pain. I, I feel it myself. But I just, you know, we gotta get through this together and, uh, I think Midland more than any place is the strongest town and we can do it. So please guys, uh, let's do what we can. Please, your worship. And I'll be asking for a recorded vote, uh, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, clearly, uh, I think people in the community have heard that council is behind them. I think it's very important to point out the role of Dr. Gardner. His role is to provide scientific advice. And, but he's also responsible for ensuring the health of the district, so Muskoka District Health Unit and monitoring the situation, ensuring that this virus, which is extremely contagious, doesn't get out of control. One need look no further, as the CAO said, than Roberta Place to understand just how contagious it is. They virtually, the entire facility, regardless of the safeguards that were put in place, contracted the virus and a significant number of deaths. And it happened in a very short period of time. I have family living in the United Kingdom and Prime Minister Johnson, Johnson, uh, relaxed over the Christmas holiday for three days. And the virus just took off. It inundated. They had to open up the, uh, Nightingale, uh, hospitals because of the overflow of COVID folks. And I know our medical officers of health, uh, you heard the CAO tonight say that the GTA area is now looking, asking for lockdown. Um, and I think you listen to Dr. Brown, who's the, uh, modeler, the chief science advisor for the province. I listened to him just the other day on CBC and it was clear that man was frightened of what could happen if we don't keep it contained. So that just speaks to, and the very simple things, everybody, first, everybody you listen to is epidemiologist says the same. to is epidemiologist says the same thing. Wash your hands. Wear a mask. Keep socially distant. You'll find people who who will tell you, I haven't had, I don't know of anybody who had the flu this year, and it's because people are doing that. So don't let your guard down. We have more, we have more vaccines coming. We are opening up facilities. Dr. Gardner is keeping a handle on things. The prime, the premier meets with the mayors virtually every Friday. Every mayor in the province is on that call and as well as General Hillier. And they are working to refine the system to to the extent that they can and make sure we get these vaccines out to everybody. And I believe that they are listening. So the tone of the conversation over the, over the weekend, as I saw it from various mayors across across Simcoe County, ranged from toxic, in some cases, as far as I'm concerned, to very reasoned, rational approaches and suggestions, such as the letter from Mayor Lehman from Berry, which this motion tent tries to emulate, which is to ask the premier to look at how we can enable our businesses, as long as they can meet the prescribed processes within the framework, to stay open. I got my haircut two, two weeks ago. I was absolutely flabbergasted at the extent to which that facility treated the situation seriously, cleaned up the state, all the stations meticulously. And I personally think that if people are willing to do that, they should be allowed to conduct their business, in my personal opinion. I don't think the premier would disagree. Let's, let's give them a chance to hear our voice. I would echo Deputy Mayor Ross in saying, this is the way you get things done. Civil disobedience, take a look at Washington, January 6th. You don't want to do that. Peaceful process, express your opinions, buy cards, you know, out the street, that's great. But don't, don't go and break the law. It's just, it's just a road you don't want to go down. So I think that council is very supportive of small, small business in the community. As I said, this is a fabulous community. I grew up here and my family's been here for hundred and since 1875 or something like that. So and and and, you know, I have siblings living here. They interact within the community, just like you and I do. And we all want everybody to be safe. We also want people to make a living as best they can. To Councilor Maine's point, the federal government announced today that SERB and rents, rent, rent subsidies will continue through June. So the federal government is continuing to pour money into the economy to support people. Councilor Cunningham said there are the health unit, as well as E D C and S, as well as the offices at Simcoe County and the Community Futures Group are there and Chamber, the I A, to provide advice to people how to access those if they don't know how. So I'm glad to be able to put this on the table on behalf of council. Where we speak, I think, with one mind and and in supported business and in support of the efforts of Dr. Gardner to keep us safe and contain that that virus so it doesn't get away and and bring about Dr. Brown's worst fears as he models it out. And with that, I will just turn it back to Deputy Mayor Ross.
Thank you very much. I'll allow one more. I saw Councilor McGinn something to add because I'd like to call a vote and make this official. If you could, the last comment, please. Thank you.
Thank you. So I wanted to thank Mr. Mr. Mayor for the comment you made about, you know, there not being flu cases. And it's because of people washing their hands. And because of people being, I've been told before that sometimes I can't be heard. So and people being diligent. And I believe you're absolutely correct. I think it's, I think it's something that we see when we go into a small business, you know, where there's, you know, a proprietor and, you know, there's one or two staff members. And they are able to have eyes on, you know, they're not in the back of this huge box store and they don't see whether the person, you know, actually, you know, washes their hands properly. So thank you for bringing that up because it goes to support small businesses. Thank you for bringing up the comment about Roberta Place because it reminds me that our small businesses are not Roberta Place. They're not, they're not a whole bunch of people together. So I appreciate you bringing that up. I understand that you were speaking to the to the variants. But our small businesses are not housing frail members of our community in groups. And there aren't multiple groups coming in. So it speaks volumes and I appreciate that you would bring that up. It's
Would I be able to call the vote? Oh, sorry. Sorry, were you not finished? I apologize. I, I, you were sort of lagging there on my, in my end, so I thought you'd stopped. I apologize.
No, I wasn't lagging. I was pausing. I appreciate the things that people have brought up and in the ways that they have brought them up, there are things that we could say or speak to that are scary. But our small businesses are not scary. They have the opportunity to look at a person and say, this is what needs to be done for you to enter this establishment. So thank you for the comments that people brought up that speak to that.
Sorry, I apologize for cutting off there, Councilor McGinn. Thank you very much and well said. And I'd ask the clerk to call a recorded vote.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, members of council, sorry. You've heard the question. When I call your name, please answer yes or no. Councilor McGinn. Okay. Councilor Oshewski?
Wholeheartedly, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Maine?
Yes.
Councilor, or Deputy Mayor Ross?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilor Downer?
Yes.
Councilor Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilor Post?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilor Gordon?
Indubitably, yes.
And Mayor Strathern?
Yes.
Okay, and that motion is carried unanimously.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Thank you very much, everyone. We'll move on to general announcements. Anyone have an announcement they'd like to bring forward this evening? Councilor Maine?
Yes, I just want to give a shout out to Georgian Bay District Secondary School. They have a play and they knew, obviously, since last year, since the fall, that they weren't going to be able to have in person. So they they found a play that had been adapted to be a digital performance. And so the performances will be March 10th, 11th and 12th. And it's the Brothers Grimm Spectacular Thon, if that's how you say it. And so they have a wonderful, basically a Zoom theater, but they'll have a little bit more control instead of just seeing little squares. They can zoom in and out. They're using software to highlight and switch between the characters. So shout out to the high school and all the students putting that together. Look forward to that. And that's some great digital content for people that are staying at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Maine. Any other? Councilor Gordon?
So now, thank you very much. Now a plea to the businesses that that can be open or they're choosing to be open, please support them. We need our to shop local more than ever. I know this has been an ongoing, resounding plea from everybody. And I know that Midland, for the most part, is answering the call. But just now is that they really need us more than ever right now. So even if you've got plenty of food at home and you're ready to cook, consider, you know, doing the curbside, shop local, support the local businesses as much as you can. I'll drive home even with, you know, barely any gas, just to make sure, even I buy gas in Midland. Just every little bit helps, guys. We really, really, really need it. And so that's my only announcement and plea. And I know I'm not alone in that. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you. Mayor Strathern?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. There is going to be a your health session at Midland Cultural Center, dealing specifically with vaccines and vaccination. I don't have the date. If anybody knows it, please chime in. But it's dealing with a subject, which of course is very relevant, germane, particularly given the conflicting advice we're hearing from N A S I, which is a fed one advisory body, the federal government and the Public Health Agency, as being another advisory regarding AstraZeneca. And I'm not a medical expert by any stretch, but the information coming out of the U K, particularly England and Scotland, as well as Israel, would suggest that the efficacy of that drug is is huge in the senior population. Never mind what I have to say, I would suggest that you tune in. It's virtual. Go to the M C C website and have a look. It's coming up in about two weeks, I believe, about the 25th, if I'm not mistaken. And I think it'd be well worth watching to understand people debate the efficacy of the various vaccines that are either approved or about to be approved and what's, what's we can expect throughout the vaccination program. So I would encourage you to do that.
Thank you very much, your worship. Any other announcements? I have one, if I could. I just wanted to take the time to thank the people that have stepped up and come out of retirement. There's a lot of Midlanders and I had the pleasure of talking to a former counselor, Jim Atwood, who retired many years ago. And he, he's now stepped up. He told me, I'm out of retirement. I'm now giving out the COVID-19 vaccine in Berry, which is unbelievable. And I hear these stories all over, people from Midland and our area stepping up and, you know, former nurses, former doctors. And we're in dire needs to get this vaccine going. So I just, you know, I, I feel important to especially thank those people for, you know, coming out of retirement. Retirements are your golden years and you're supposed to be relaxed and there's getting up every morning and, you know, vaccinating our population. So special thanks to them. Special thanks to them. So we'll move on to the next item. Oh, Councilor, sorry, Mayor Strathern, last announcement?
It's just, it's just to follow on to what I was saying earlier. Somebody was gracious enough to send me the actual information about when it will be. It is the 25th of March. Will be broadcast by Rogers Television, starting at 7:30 in the evening. So if you've got, if you've got a moment, make some popcorn, sit down and find out all about vaccines and vaccination.
Wonderful. I think we all need to watch that. Thank you so much. All right, next up on the agenda is moved by Councilor Cunningham, seconded by Councilor Post, that the committee of the whole rise and report. All those in favor? So carried, off to you, you're back to your formal session, your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I have a motion moved by Councilor Downer, seconded by Councilor Cunningham, that the recommendations of the committee of the whole for the meeting of March 3rd, 2021, be adopted as resolutions of council. Comments or questions from council? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. That carries unanimously. So I also have, so now we move into motions for which notice was given. And I have a motion to put on the floor. And so I guess I'll have, turn it back to Deputy Mayor Ross.
Yes, you have a motion, sir?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I do. And it reads as that as a community relief measure, staff be directed to examine the implications of waiving tax interest and penalties for the report to be brought forward to a future meeting for consideration. It's sort of analogous to what we did last year without actually changing the dates because apparently that causes unbelievable consternations amongst the people who have to manage that. So we can, we can affect the same thing by just waiving the penalty. So.
Looks like we have some great discussion for in two weeks' time.
Well, that's correct, yes. So I think it's a worthy of our, our support. So
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
And I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. I have a, sorry, I have a motion moved by Councilor Gordon, seconded by Councilor Oshewski. Sorry, Deputy Mayor, actually. This was, this is a motion for which notice was given, so we can pass it tonight.
Oh, okay. I apologize. I thought you were bringing, yeah, you're right. Okay. So you need a mover and a seconder? A mover and, sorry, do you want to read it again for me? I apologize.
So it's
I was a little confused there.
Moved by myself and seconded by, who would like to second this?
I see Councilor McGinn?
That as a community relief measure, staff be directed to examine the implications of waiving the tax, the tax interest and penalties for the report to be brought forward to a future meeting for consideration.
Any questions or comments with regards to that item? Councilor Maine?
Thank you for that, bringing this forward. I just wanted to add a comment. We were getting some feedback from one resident last year who greatly appreciated the the flexibility and responsiveness of staff to, instead of having municipal taxes paid quarterly, having them broken into monthly payments. So if that option isn't a normal option, it's very much appreciated to extend that option to everyone or at least notify the community of what are the available options currently. Because, yeah, anyways, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John. I mean, Councilor Maine. Councilor Gordon?
Thanks for bringing this motion forward. It's good. I mean, anything we can do to help relieve our residents. Of course, as we're going to see, I'm sure in the report, there is a cost to this to some degree, and there's always some risk. And these are the things that we're prepared to do, I'm pretty sure, for this community. So anyway, I'm glad you, I'm glad you, I look forward to the report and I'm glad you brought it up. And it's kind of timely that it's added on to this, you know, that it's kind of coalesces with that motion in solidarity with our, our small businesses that can't open right now. So right on. Nice to see.
Wonderful. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Looks like pass. We'll look forward to that report. Thank you very much, your worship. I'll hand it back over to you, sir.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, sorry, I apologize. Yes.
Did we get a seconder for that?
Yes, it was seconded by Councilor McGinn.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, council. Another arrow in the quiver to support our businesses. So I have a motion moved by Councilor Gordon, seconded by Councilor Oshewski, that bylaw 2021 dash seven, being a bylaw to adopt proceedings of the regular council meeting with closed session held March 3rd, 2021, be passed and enacted. Comments or questions from council with respect to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. And that's, it's an evening of unanimity. Wonderful. So I have a motion by Councilor Pro, seconded by Councilor Maine, that this regular meeting of council with closed session adjourned at 8:12 P M. All favor? I think it's also an evening for records. I think, I don't think we've ever called a meeting this early. So congratulations.
Have a good evening.
Where they can all that way. Be safe.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night.